Our hearing this evening was convened to provide the public with an opportunity to comment on our multi-family customer assistance program. This is an exciting initiative at DC Water, and we are treading new ground with this program. The goal is to provide a new way to assist customers who are struggling due to job loss or economic uncertainty, insecurity, even if they are not technically customers of ours. That's typically because their water bill is included as part of their monthly rent or condo fees, or it means that we do not have a direct relationship with those customers. This evening, we will hear from DC Water General Manager David Gaddis, as well as anyone from the community who wishes to offer testimony. As with any new initiative at DC Water, our goal is to proceed methodically and carefully, and also to weigh options from all sides before we move forward with this new policy. If we do adopt any changes to customer assistance programs at DC Water, we will do so at a public hearing. Joining me this evening are other members of the Board of Directors of DC Water: Howard Gibbs, Ivan Frischberg, and Anthony Jean Cola. Thank you all for joining us. Board Secretary, will you please call the role to establish the required quorum for tonight's hearing?
Vice Chair Bot.
Present.
Anthony Jean Cola.
I'm here.
Jed Ross.
Present.
Ivan Frischberg. And Howard Gibbs.
Present.
David Gaddis.
Present.
Mark Battle.
Present.
Tisha Powell.
Present.
Matthew Brown.
President.
Kristen Williams.
Sorry.
Kristen Williams. That's okay, I got you. Kristen Williams.
Present.
Carolyn McCool.
Present.
And Amon Kirk.
Present.
Thank you, Ms. Manley. Thank you, Ms. Manley. And welcome to Mr. Ross also, who we missed earlier. For the record, DC Water was established by the Council of the District of Columbia in 1996 as an independent authority with a separate legal existence apart from the district government. DC Water operates the world's largest advanced wastewater treatment plant at Blue Plains and provides water and sewer services to all residents, visitors, institutions, and businesses in the District of Columbia. Our drinking water comes from the Potomac River. All of the proposed changes to our rates were published in the DC Register and have been discussed by Mr. Gaddis at the recent DC Council Oversight Hearing and in conversations with stakeholders. Part of our responsibility at DC Water is showing customers that we are sensitive to the cost of water service, but also that this board is open-minded about ways in which we can best balance the burden of the cost. We're doing that while simultaneously working to restore the health of the Anacostia River by preventing combined sewer overflows as part of the Clean Rivers Project. The legacy of that work will be felt for generations to come. Most people watching this hearing know that DC Water is a nonprofit, unlike for-profit utilities in the electric or gas fields. We raise only the amount of money we need to carry out our mission. Our entire budget and all of the customer assistance initiatives we pursue are sustained by the revenue we raise. Before we begin and hear from the public and DC Water's management, I will review the ground rules for this hearing. Individuals presenting testimony have up to five minutes to speak. Representatives of an organization or a group have a total of 10 minutes to address this committee. Those testifying should clearly state their name, name of organization if any, and their address. Witnesses representing an organization should give a brief description of the organization, its services, and its location. The public comment period for this change started February 19th, 2021, and will extend until April 12th, 2021. Our board is tentatively scheduled to consider this issue at our May 6 meeting. The board gives equal consideration and weight to written comments that will be reviewed as we receive them. Written comments can be submitted to the Office of the Board Secretary, DC Water, 1385 Canal Street, Southeast, Washington DC 20003. You may also email comments to Lmanley@DCWater.com. That's L-M-A-N-L-E-Y at DCWater.com. A final decision on the proposed rate increases will be made only by the members of the board who represent the District of Columbia at the board's regularly scheduled meeting. Now, Mr. Gaddis will provide his testimony on the proposed creation of the multi-family discount program. Mr. Gaddis?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Good evening. My name is David L. Gaddis, and I have the honor of serving as Chief Executive Officer and General Manager of the District of Columbia Water and Sewer Authority, also known as DC Water. I've held this position for three years, but this past year has undoubtedly been one of the hardest. The last 12 months of COVID-19 pandemic have been a struggle. We've all lost friends, family, and neighbors during the pandemic, and our whole way of life has been altered. The pandemic has also directly impacted DC Water in countless other ways, from the way we interact with our customers to the precautions our crews in the field have taken as well. The way we have transitioned to having much of our office staff work from home, even this hearing is virtual in order to minimize risk to our employees and to the community. And that gets us to where we are this evening. Tonight, we are here to discuss a new customer assistance program that is intended to help direct residents, even if they are not customers of DC Water. This may be one of the most progressive and proactive policies of any water utility in the country, and I am proud to talk about it this evening. Essentially, what we are doing is taking some of the assistance funds that we have set aside for our customers and found a new way to extend a helping hand to those not paying a monthly DC water bill. The new program is aimed at low and moderate income people in the district who live in multi-family dwellings, meaning a building with four or more units. It does not apply to single-family homes, such as an owner who rents a house or a basement apartment. Those customers are already eligible for the DC Water Cares Residential Assistance Program approved by the board in February. To that end, we are applying the program to households whose income is less than or equal to 80% of the average median income. DC Water spent many hours consulting with stakeholders in the community to develop this program, to ensure it would provide the benefit to the financially struggling household, and that this process was easy and efficient to ensure maximum participation. A key element of the application process is that all eligible households do not need to complete an application. Once the owner of the multifamily building enrolls, tenants will be notified of the benefit and can accept or decline it. Eligible households include those who live in affordable dwelling units or receive Department of Human Services benefits or Department of Energy and Environment Energy Assistance. The way the program is designed is that any eligible tenant can receive a credit of up to $2,000 in a year. That credit will be passed along to them by the landlord or property owner. The process is intended to encourage homeowners or encourage owners to participate by allowing them to keep 10% of the credit total while allocating the remaining 90% to their tenants. Of course, they must be able to show proof that they pass the credit on to their tenant. This innovative design has allowed us to provide nearly $2 million in support since the approval of the program in February. As this board knows, for the 13 months of this COVID-19 pandemic, DC Water has gone the extra mile to assist customers. We were among the first utilities in the country to immediately cease disconnections of service, moving to protect vital drinking water in early days of the crisis. We also provided flexible payment plans to customers regardless of income or arrears. Now, as we begin to turn the corner, we still know that there are many families and seniors and others in this community who are struggling. And that is why we wanted to create this new program to assist those people. It is my hope that the new multi-family assistance program will serve as a model for other water systems across the country, but more importantly, that it will provide a much-needed lifeline to our neighbors who are most in need. Madam Chair, that concludes my statement this evening. But of course, you know, I'm always happy and happy to answer any questions that anyone may have. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gaddis. And now we are going to move to a presentation by Carolyn McCool, Director of Customer Care. Carolyn?
Thank you, Ms. Bot. I am going to be sharing. Okay, can everyone see my screen?
Yes, we can.
Perfect. As Ms. Bot mentioned, I'm here to share a little bit of information about our multi-family emergency assistance program. Our goal today is to share this information and hear about our feedback from our customers to ensure that we can implement the most successful program. Our program design really starts with a two-fold concept of how we wanted to provide assistance, again, targeted towards multifamily dwellings, four units or more, that were not owned by district or federal governments. We first wanted to ensure that those individuals that lived in affordable housing units were eligible for the program, as well as those tenants that met the income requirements, which is 80% of AMI and less. We wanted to make sure that it was easy for owners and that they would enter into an agreement with DC Water so they could apply the appropriate benefits onto tenants. In relation to the benefit and how it's calculated, DC Water decided to take a look at both the consumption for the average bill for a three-month period, starting from April to December of last year during our COVID time, and determine how much that was, as well as looking at the past due balance that existed on the account as of December 30th, 2020. We looked at which one of these values was greater and determined that we would be able to provide assistance to that customer. That would be the maximum credit that would be allowable for that account. Once we had the maximum credit, using the information that we have within our system, that it has been validated by the owners, we would take the number of units that were associated with that amount, and we would divide it equally so that we could determine the per-unit credit. So in this example, you can see that the average bill from April to December was about $200. Times three, it was $600, but there was a past due balance of $1,500. So the maximum credit was $1,500. The number of units that were identified for this household was five. So therefore, $1,500 divided by the five units gave us $300 eligible for credit. And as you heard in Mr. Gaddis's earlier comments, we would look to be able to assist a unit up to a maximum credit of $2,000. This is consistent with the amount that was allocated for our residential assistance programs. Now, I'd like to share a little bit about what the owners need to do and what the tenants need to do. As we start out, the owners can hear about the programs under many ways. So DC Water is conducting outreach, and you also heard in earlier comments that we had done substantial work with the multifamily communicator and our stakeholder group to begin with. So we were also sharing that information and communicating out to those agencies who could communicate to their groups. We also have been providing much information to tenants and as well as providing information in our bills that allow tenants to request assistance. So no matter what channel is found, the owner would go to our site, and they would look at the obligations, and I'll share a little bit about what those obligations are, determine if they are willing to participate. They would complete an application. Then DC Water would review the application and verify that agrees with our records, confirm the benefit amount. And then DC Water would send the communication to owner and any tenants about the benefits they could receive. We also will be doing follow-up and compliance audits as necessary to ensure that people are receiving the benefits. As I mentioned, there is some owner obligations, and I wanted to walk through a few of those right now. First obligation they have is obviously to complete the application and certification. One of the other important features of this was to find out that they were not already being assisted for the same dollars in previous other financial assistance that they could receive. It also was the commitment that they would provide 90% of the credit within 30 days to the tenant's bill or homeowner association if they were in a low-income condo, and that they would establish payment arrangements on any balances. We wanted to keep things simple, so we did not request proof of the credit initially, but would basically would ensure that it was received in any case where there was any questions that came up for the tenants. We also requested that the owners participate with us to ensure that our automated meter readings are providing the most accurate bill. So those are the owner obligations. And now I'd like to move on to the tenants and how they participate. This is something I'm particularly proud of. We have found three scenarios where we actually qualify categorically eligible customers. That's the Affordable Housing Unit Group, those customers receiving DHS assistance, and those customers that receive DOE or LIHEP assistance. What we have found is, as Mr. Gaddis mentioned, we've really already been able to assist over 4,800 tenants for over $2 million because people could automatically qualify and apply for those programs. So now I'm going to walk through a little bit about how that works. If the person lives in an affordable housing unit, this is the easiest of processes. The owner, when they complete their application, submits the information for the tenants, and then DC Water will review that information and then send the communication out to the tenants, asking them if they would like to ensure that they would like the money. And as long as they did not decide to opt out within 10 days, we would actually post that money to the account. The second scenario, which is very similar to the Affordable Housing Unit, is those customers that receive DOE, LIHEP, or UDP assistance. In this case, we received some information from DOE informing of all those tenants that are categorically eligible because they've already been qualified this year under those programs. In these cases, again, once the owner begins to participate, we would send out the communication to the tenant. The tenant would have 10 days to decline the funding, and then if they chose not to receive it, we would remove it. If we didn't hear anything, that funding would apply to their accounts. The third categorically eligible customer segment were those customers that received assistance from the Department of Human Services. For this group of customers, we actually would be sending out some communication to the customers and informing them that they qualify for the assistance, and they would be informed of the assistance amount. But in this particular case, we do have the requirement that they have to opt into the program using a unique tracking number. And then once they opted in to receive the funding, they would be able to get that posted to their accounts. There was a decision based on the wonderful collaboration we heard from our partners is that because this particular customer segment could have other benefits impacted, they may want to consider whether or not that information would impact their decision to accept it. So we wanted to ensure they were conscious and made sure that that information was available to them. Now, the fourth population that we are seeing is because we do recognize that customers may not be receiving any other assistance, and those are those tenants that do not qualify for another program. We tried to make sure that we kept this program consistent with the way we do our other DC Water programs, and that is that they would go to DOE. DOE would validate the income information, and once that information was confirmed, they would send that over to DC Water. DC Water will review whether or not the owner is enrolled in the program or not. And if they are, they will go ahead and process the assistance, and that will post immediately to the account. If the owner is not enrolled, DC Water will reach out to that owner to request if they would like to participate in the program because they have tenants who are available. And each tenant will receive the final notice for that information. So that's a little bit about our tenant process. We also recognize that this was a significant process, though we felt it was important that we build some customer interfaces, and we have some ways to make it simple and easy for customers to interact for us. DC Water developed several things. The first thing that you'll see is a property status. If anyone goes to our DC Water website and looks under "Multi-Family Assistance Program", they would be able to see where they could type in the name of their property or the address of their property, and they would populate and give them back the status of whether or not that owner is or is not participating in the program and whether they are or are not eligible. In addition, on this same portal, we do have the application that is completed by the owners. The information is already uploaded within our system that we have retained, so we can keep it very simple, and the owners have to provide minimal information if the data matches existing information. And the third piece of customer-facing information that we provided and developed as part of this process was that tracking number and portal so that at any given time, an owner or one of the participants could go on and see the status of their assistance and whether or not it was being processed or post, or whether or not other people were participating. So we felt like this was the best way to make sure that everyone could have 24 hours, seven days a week, access to the information about how they provide multifamily assistance. The next thing I wanted to do was share a little bit about the next steps that are coming along with this program. We are here today to have the public feedback. The comment period ends on April 12th. Then we will be presenting our final recommendation to the Retail Rates Committee on April 27th. We will look for the Retail Rates Committee to move that on to the board for a May 6 decision and publish final rulemaking on May 21st. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Ms. McCool, for the presentation. I wanted to make one point of clarification. Inadvertently, in my opening statement, I made reference to voting on a rate increase. But this meeting and program does not involve a rate increase, so I just wanted to make sure that I stated that for the record and corrected that. Now, we are going to hear from our public witnesses, and we will begin with those that are pre-registered. Our first witness is Grace Soderberg from the Office of People's Council. Ms. Soderberg, you have 10 minutes. You can begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Board of Directors, stakeholders, and members of the viewing public. I am Grace Soderberg, Assistant People's Counsel at the Office of the People's Council for the District of Columbia. I am appearing on behalf of the People's Council Sandra Madavru Frye. The People's Council and Deputy People's Counsel Karen Sistrunk join us in the audience of this virtual public hearing. We thank you for the opportunity to appear before you this evening to offer OPC's comments on the proposed rulemaking to establish DC Water Cares' Multi-Family Assistance Program for low-income occupants of multifamily dwellings economically impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. This oral testimony is a summary of the key points of the written comments that OPC will file in this proceeding. Since April 2019, OPC has been the statutory representative of District of Columbia Rate Payers of DC Water Services under the DC Water Consumer Protection Amendment Act of 2018. OPC's representation of district water consumers supplements our longstanding role as the statutory representative of district rate payers of natural gas, electric, and local telephone utility services. OPC's primary mission in all matters pertaining to utility services and rates, including water, is to zealously advocate for the provision of safe, reliable, and sustainable utility services for all District of Columbia consumers at equitable and affordable rates. OPC has worked to ensure that district residents in all eight wards of the city have access to clean and reliable water services at affordable rates. Our mandate to protect and assist district water consumers is especially relevant in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic as the public health emergency makes the need for affordable water service even more critical. At the start of the COVID-19 pandemic, the ultimate depth and duration of the economic crisis was unknown at both the national and local district economies. This economic certainty remains for DC water consumers, especially for those facing difficulty paying for essential water services. Certainly, access to water and sewer services is essential for the health, safety, and welfare of all people, especially during the COVID-19 public health emergency. Based on our careful review of the instant proposal and its impact on DC water consumers, OPC will provide written comments on the record. My oral testimony this evening will provide highlights of OPC's comments. OPC submits, number one, the proposal is a positive development to assist low- and middle-income multifamily occupants. Number two, DC Water's collaboration with OPC will further outreach and education efforts to eligible consumers. Number three, DC Water's new monthly reporting regarding arrears data will benefit consumers. And number four, OPC's water affordability study is an opportunity for further collaboration with DC Water to explore solutions to assist consumers. As noted earlier, the purpose of this emergency and proposed rulemaking is to establish DC Water Cares' Multi-Family Assistance Program. Here, DC Water will provide up to $2,000 of emergency relief per eligible occupant, including tenants that rent or lease the dwelling unit in multifamily properties. According to DC Water, the rulemaking is necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of DC water consumers and residents from the acute economic impacts of COVID-19. The stated purpose of this program is to address the increase in the number of occupants in multifamily properties that are in arrears in accumulating outstanding balances. OPC's comments during the earlier stages of the COVID-19 pandemic urge DC Water to reflect and account for the negative economic impacts on DC water consumers due to the overall financial uncertainty resulting from the pandemic. This DC Water proposal recognizes that concern. The availability of this program is a positive development for tenants who rent or lease multifamily units. Generally, these water consumers do not have access to customer assistance programs because they are not the customer of record for the utility service. At the same time, even though these water consumers do not have the privity of contract with the utility provider, they still have the need for and do use the water service. This water service is an essential utility service, especially during the COVID-19 pandemic. Accordingly, OPC strongly supports this proposal to assist low- and middle-income multifamily occupants. In earlier comments, OPC recommended DC Water's marketing plan for customer assistance programs should be supplemented with partnerships with community-based organizations trusted by the consumers targeted for participation. In turn, OPC offered assistance to engage in community-based outreach in line of our extensive hands-on experience in visibility in local communities representing and advocating for district utility consumers. OPC is pleased to note our collaboration with DC Water on outreach and education efforts regarding this program. For example, we have identified community events where both DC Water and OPC can attend and are sharing OPC's community contacts that DC Water can utilize. We hope to continue this collaboration with DC Water on future initiatives that benefit consumers. Also in earlier comments, OPC recommended that DC Water report arrears for its customers on a monthly basis, including data by ward and the customer's income level. OPC is pleased that at the March 23rd, 2021 DC Water Retail Rates Committee meeting, DC Water introduced a new monthly report that includes a report on delinquent accounts by customer class, commercial, multifamily, and residential. It was also announced that DC Water will provide monthly reporting on arrears by ward and by customer assistance category. and by customer assistance category. OPC suggests that additional information should be included in the monthly reporting to benefit D.C. Water consumers. Using the categories above, additional data should include the number of deferred payment agreements and the total dollar amounts associated with each agreement. OPC also recommends that, once the moratorium ends, reporting include the number of terminations for non-payment, the number of arrears-related restorations, the number of disconnection notices, and the total dollar amount of accounts deemed uncollectible. This data will enable a better understanding of whether and how customer assistance is used and its impact on customer affordability, as well as the effectiveness of available resources to benefit and assist consumers. This information will aid policymakers as they evaluate the adequacy of financial assistance programs and community assistance resources, as well as facilitate their ability to identify areas for improvement. Data collection and sharing play an integral role in providing information for developing evidence-based policies to improve outcomes for all stakeholders. Evidence-based solutions can be crafted to address the unique challenges and burdens faced by all consumers during this crisis. Policymakers at all levels can explore sustainable solutions to ensure the continued safe access to water services at affordable rates. Lastly, OPC notes that it has commissioned a water affordability study to inform and advise on matters affecting water affordability, particularly for the district's low-to-middle income households. OPC undertook this study and the companion Energy Affordability Study due to our concern that households across all income levels in the district struggle with water and energy affordability issues. The Water Affordability Study will provide detailed information about the design, funding, participation, and underlying need for water assistance programs offered to low- and middle-income households in the district. The study also examines similar jurisdictions to assist us in considering policies and programs to increase water affordability. OPC expects to release the study by early summer in hopes it provides an opportunity for further collaboration with D.C. Water to explore solutions to assist consumers. In conclusion, OPC presents these comments in furtherance of our common goal of ensuring affordable rates and tangible benefits to all D.C. Water rate payers and consumers. Affordability remains a key concern for OPC as we strive to keep water and other utility rates as low as possible and to reduce the financial burden on utility consumers. OPC is committed to fulfilling our mandate to ensure that district residents have access to high-quality utility services that are safe, reliable, universally affordable, and environmentally sustainable. Again, thank you for the opportunity to present OPC's testimony this evening. I am available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Ms. Soderberg. And, you know, it's always nice to hear from the Office of People's Council. As you know, D.C. Water and the Office of People's Council share many of the same goals, so we really appreciate you being here tonight and testifying. I wanted to open it up to our board members that are on this call if they have questions for Ms. Soderberg. Okay, thank you so much, Ms. Soderberg, for your testimony. Is there anyone else interested in testifying this evening? If so, could you please state your name and if you are here in your individual capacity or are representing an organization or a group? Okay, hearing none. In closing, I wanted to make a couple statements. This Board does not take any changes to rates or customer assistance lightly. In this case, this new program represents a new opportunity to assist district residents who rely on D.C. Water but do not pay direct water bills. As always, this Board will weigh the pros and cons of any changes carefully and deliberately before taking any action. Thank you all for being here this evening, and with that, I will close this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.